Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 4th, and the time is 6:37, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. First, it's minutes from May 21st, 2024. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
Just a comment. I had let Jackie know as well, but just the vote for vice chairperson.
Okay.
Just so note, show that it reflects Mike.
Okay. We should have that updated on our agenda. Needs to be updated as well. Yeah. The catch, Cheryl? If there aren't any others, then I will take the motion.
Well, make a motion to accept the minutes from May 21st.
Have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is warrants 72 and 73. I have them here in the folder. We'll pass them around. Any questions or comments on the warrants? Hearing none, I will take the motion.
Make motion to approve the warrants 72 and 73.
Excellent. Can I have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is disposal of obsolete computer visual weapons.
The annual vote during the junior year authorized the subject to dispose of given pertinent data is obsolete or dysfunctional or both. That would all votes. Yeah. Not comparable to other costs to get their existence. Laptops that are failing. We were able to get new laptops for all our students. So that one issue. Came just in time as the other most are failed. So there will be disposal of there's no cost to the issue. It's invaluable to submit to get someone to help me. They scrub any data that's on the within. And they dispose everything off of you breaking down. So that was the last thing. It will also include the equipment that was called the late struggle. That was the one that we want. So again, which was covered by insurance. That will be what made also be that true. So I usually do this in like two different trips. I'm usually having to come out once in late June and give an office for September. So.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for Dave?
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping on top of that. I appreciate it. Um, if there's no additional questions, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to for disposal of the obsolete computer visual equipment.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so next we have visitor comments. And I will read the thing, but then also we have our new school committee liaison here as well. So we'll get to him after the visitor's comments, just to acknowledge. Uh, visitor's comment, any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Let me visit very Dave, do you want to come sit up here so we can? Okay. Okay, so anyone, anyway, everyone, this is Dave Vabake. He's the newest member to the select board. And he's also been voted to be our school committee liaison. He and I spoken on the phone and so we're ready to kind of hit the ground, uh, hit the ground running. So we're glad to have you. And typically what we've done in the past with Glenn and Jen Silva and others is, you know, we make sure that you get a copy of the agenda. You just get added to the distribution. And you're welcome to attend at any time. If there's something that you would like to um, sit down and meet with us and take part in the committee meeting, we just need to know so that we can add you as part of that. For that. And then also every other meeting that we have, we have subcommittee meetings. And Glenn liked to come on that meeting because then he would participate on the subcommittees that interested him. And it was typically on the budget one or our community relations subcommittee. Um, and just that way he was able to be part of those discussions. And because it was a subcommittee and it's an open meeting, he was able to actually participate. And we got some really great ideas from him from that participation. So we're glad to have you and we'll be talking about dates and things also. So you'll be able to get all of those. As well. Anything else that you all think we need to add stuff?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, we're glad, we're glad to have you. I'm sure we'll keep you on your toes. Yeah, I bet. Are you drinking from the fire hose? Okay, um. So cool, you're up.
All right, thank you. I hope you're all doing well. For East Meadow. A lot of the final touches are being done for on the school year. A lot of cleanup and final assignments are going out this week. Fourth quarter is almost over as we know. Sixth grade graduation is this Thursday at 1:00. Student engaged in the field day was before Memorial Day weekend. All grades had a chance to get outside the games and compete with one another. Students from, including myself, from the junior and rising senior class officers were able to help out as chaperones, if you will. Uh, seventh grade orientation two weeks ago and sixth graders went over to the high school yesterday. And ice cream social. As for upcoming events, on June 7th, the senior class will be doing a walkthrough of East Meadow. Students and staff will be chairing the course. Other than these items, excuse me, it's just wrapping up the end of the year activities. As for the high school, graduation planning is done. It'll be Saturday. Senior award week. Or excuse me, senior awards. Like the banquet today and the award ceremony would be on Thursday. Mrs. Bearden and Mr. Stappalata are still working on the schedule for next week, or next year, excuse me. MCAT biology. Uh, for grade nine is this week and teachers at the high school are giving out funds. Project 351 was recently, our student ambassadors Noah Chambers and Faith Ramos went to meet with other representatives around the state. Volleyball won their Western Mass and also made a state appearance. I was told the senior trip went very well. Everyone had a great time on the water. They did a boat ride around the harbor, I was told, and you know, export Boston. Uh, the field trip to Sunnys for the seventh and eighth graders also went well. The brownstone field trip for the ninth graders was postponed due to weather issues to this Thursday.
And again, it got postponed. It's actually moved to this Friday.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Post rain again.
For correcting.
Yeah, that didn't happen until late this afternoon.
Okay. Um, our last school attendance competition will also be held within the next couple of days. As for community engagement, the book awards were done this week. Seventh and eighth graders got their recognition. And the underclassmen awards went out. Parents came out to children. For future plans and goals, graduation, as I mentioned before, is the scene, uh, is the Saturday. Senior award ceremony is this Thursday. That's about all. Have any questions for me?
I don't think so.
Yep, great. That's okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. Feel like a cool.
Thanks. Have a good one. All right, now for our new business is first, the middle school field hockey pull-up with South Hadley.
So I did speak with Mr. Thebeuk Athletic Director about this. This is a co-op that we currently have in place for grades nine through 12. Um, and they are open to allowing our seventh and eighth graders. Um, and I did check with Mr. DeBuke and he confirmed that South Hadley's seventh and eighth graders um, are also being welcomed to. I know that was a question of the prior co-op, so.
Excellent.
That would just require a vote and the change would be allowing seven through 12 participate instead of our current nine.
Any questions on this? Does he think that there'll be some interest?
I am not sure.
They did the South Hadley AD and the field hockey coach came to and spent lunch with us and did some recruiting. So I know that there were some high school students that expressed interest. I wasn't in there when the middle school went, so I didn't see. Making the seventh and eighth graders.
Field hockey a flower or a transplant?
So at least for some.
So. Um, if there aren't any other questions, I will take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the middle school field hockey pull-up with South Hadley. So it will encompass grades seven through 12.
May I have a good? Oh, very. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up is school choice.
So I've already taken one vote on, um, a proposed school choice. I did put an updated slide in the folder for tonight. So after speaking with Ms. Jordan and Ms. Dejarle, I think there's two places. One place, um, we weren't sure of in March when the school committee took their initial vote was in kindergarten. We're currently have, um, we're planning for two sections of kindergarten and we have 29 students enrolled. Speaking with Ms. Dejarle, um, she was comfortable opening, um, up to four spots for kindergarten. She said even if we got some additional resident enrollment, she felt comfortable that they would be able to accommodate that. And then Ms. Jordan, um, we had originally, she had originally recommended up to five seats in seventh grade. We opened two. Um, we had our initial lottery. We actually had three applicants at the time, so two got in, one went on the waitlist. And when she's gone back through the numbers, um, she felt comfortable opening up those additional three because they have opened a third section of seventh grade classes for next year. So a recommendation would be to add four kindergarten seats and three additional seventh grade seats at this time. Maybe only two grades in by this.
So the ones in.
Yeah, I can try to talk you through that. So the ones with the in the parentheses with the asterisks are what we, or what you approved previously. The numbers on the left are what we projected, like could be, we thought we could go up to. Uh, and then in the K and seven, the fancy parentheses have been new recommendations.
So for 10th grade, that's this year's current freshman class. Are we sure that this number is right?
Forty-one?
Yeah. I get challenging. I'd really like to move my fifteen.
Forty-two. Roll the dashboard as of the end of May, we're at forty-one.
Okay. So. Publicly, I might. I can.
Clip the T.
Um, all right, that's good. Um. Questions, discussion, comments? On this. So with the kindergarten for 29, the four would bring it to 33 and that's still.
Would be like a class of 16 and 17 if those seats were to get full, get filled, um, this year. I think 20 and 21 and 1.41 and.
Okay, so we were comfortable with that even for additional, some additional residents.
I did check in with Lisa again today on that and she felt comfortable.
Okay. It's within the two classrooms that we.
And there are, we believe, basically some phone calls we received. There are some siblings, um, looking to get into kindergarten. I'm not sure of the number exactly, but um, obviously no siblings.
Let me start right. Okay. Um, anybody else? Hearing no discussion, I'll approve the motion.
Uh, make motion to accept the proposed school choice availability for school year 2014.
Sorry, it's.
Bring it to board. We already approved two.
It's in kindergarten.
Kindergarten, an additional four seats in kindergarten and three seats in seventh grade. Those would be the only recommendations for tonight.
It's in the weird little wiggly brackets.
Uh, so the I'm saying seventh grade.
Yes.
Four and three.
Yes.
So four additional openings for kindergarten and three additional openings for seventh grade.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, interim superintendent candidate. Do either of you want to? Do, or do you want me to?
Why don't you want to do it?
Why don't you do it? I've been diving too much on you.
Okay.
So just in terms of an update?
Yeah.
Okay, so we did our finalist interviews just last week. Um, for, and we had four, um, really great kind of outstanding candidates that each brought maybe some little bit, something different to the table. Um, and after deliberating, we settled on, um, Mary Jane Rickson pending negotiating a successful contract. Um, and I have been speaking with her and so it's, uh, feel like we're doing more on that, um, as we get along. All right. Director of pupil services.
Great. So I am pleased. I originally, this is what I had put in our last meeting and at that point I was recommending, but I'm excited to introduce Nicole Harrow. Um, as our, as Granby's next director of pupil services. Nicole has extensive experience and dedication to inclusive education, which make her an outs, which made her an outstanding candidate. She believes that all children can learn in an inclusive curriculum, with an inclusive curriculum and tailored instruction. Emphasizing high expectations, clear goals and collaboration with all stakeholders. She's held similar positions in other districts. Nicole has had a variety of experiences that I believe will ensure Granby students will receive the appropriate services um, per their individual needs. I'm excited that Nicole is able to join us tonight for a brief introduction so that I can introduce her to the committee. Um, and we can start the onboarding process. I know Nicole has already been in touch with uh, Megan Shepherd, our current director of pupil services and to get the ball rolling. So happy to have her here. And if you want to come up and say hello.
Hi, everybody. Nicole, nice to meet you all. Um, I'm really excited, um, to be, um, part of Granby now. I live in Belcher Town, so my family's thrilled that I'm so close to home too. Um, I'm very, you know, um, I was telling, um, the superintendent when we met that, you know, for many years I was, I drive by the school and the schools and I say, okay, one day, uh, Granby's gonna open up and I'm gonna be at Granby's. So, um, I'm just thrilled. I'm thrilled to work with the staff. Um, my interview process was wonderful. The committee was delightful. So that really just made me more excited about the possibilities. So I was thrilled when I got the call. So, um, I look forward to, you know, working with the staff and the buildings and the families and get to know the community even more than I know. So I'm really looking forward to it. I'm so glad to be here. Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't know if you have any question for me? Thank you. I'm so excited. I look forward to it.
Thank you. So happy that you could make, make yourself an introduce.
Good. So I kind of have it to it. I don't want to leave a problem here of your business. And the report, superintendent report.
Apologize, I did not put the enrollment dashboard down here. So as part of my superintendent's report, I'm letting you know that we, um, we broke our streak. We're, we lost one student in the month of May, so we are down to 711. Uh, for the first time in this, in this, in all the events. Um. I know. Um, full cover the senior week information, the seniors' trip to Boston yesterday. They're at Villa Rose tonight. Senior awards late Thursday. They have a break here at East Meadow. Then cookout Friday and graduation is Saturday. Sullivan and Asia at, uh, the junior senior high school. Sixth grade step up ceremony is this Thursday at East Meadow. Just to remind the fall families that junior senior high school students have early dismissal next Tuesday, June, Thursday for final exams. And all students will be having early dismissal next Friday, June 14th, which is the last day for 24, 25 school.
Excellent. Any question? Finance and operations.
So the only thing I have to report on is we are going to push back a lot of the bid opening from, for the kitchen from June 13th to July 2nd. Um, the architect, excuse me, is waiting on specific statements, specifications that the subbidders will need access to. It's been a little bit longer to get that information, make that available. So we're, you know, pushing that rather than and trying to rush through and, and then be missing something in that sense. So we're still optimistic, um, on our timeline, um, but, um, this is an important step that we want to make sure we're hitting.
Anything else? For talk? Nope.
Um, so CES, we met the 29th of May. Um. We did go through the executive director's contract negotiation. And there was the finance and budget update, which, um, they had, we had talked a lot about a projected deficit of 1.3 million, even if it's they were doing to mitigate those areas kind of going forward. So to not be in this position again in the grand school year. And we also went through the executive director's report. Um, we focused a lot about the upcoming graduation of students that were programs of like Malcolm and I think that.
So when's your next meeting?
June, June.
That's the end of our agenda. For our next meeting is June 8th. Um. Subcommittees. We should probably have budget and finance because it'll be after town meeting. And uh, topic? Any others that we need? Do we, um, have community relations or should we just stick with the two heavy hitters for, for next, next time?
Those two in my mind would, would do it.
Okay. So that's it. Anything else that we want to make sure is on the, um, agenda for next time? The one thing that was brought up, um, town meeting is Monday, June 10th. Um, I'm working with Steven on my six minute six minute spiel. I'm paying phone tag and trying to catch up with Glenn, so, um, I'll be, uh, working to finalize a thing just next to me. Actually, it looks like I'm right. Get on a call tomorrow. At around, um, 8:30 just again, because I, um, I feel like some of the wording used in the booklet sort of different. Um, so I, you know, just I don't want to say what I want to say without giving him a heads up. And I think I might reach out to Chris as well because in my mind, if there was a huge discrepancy, it should become players. And as it says in the booklet, um, we didn't give, once again, I think once again is actually used, itemized. Itemized budget and we had multiple meetings with Chris and with Glenn.
Says major anomaly. Here's the school department is not required to give a detailed budget to the administration. The administrator wants all of the proposed budget is basically done with lightning, which is completely Dave, the town administrator, line item budget. In fact, multiple, two, at least two line item budgets prior to our meeting with him and our liaison. We met with them, we've given parameters for our 25 budget and then we worked with them up there in the year.
So it's just stuff like that, that, um, I want to have the conversation with Glenn and Chris because I feel like it takes people against us, giving it an underlying vibe like we're doing something wrong and, um, you know, I, I feel like if the town administrator looked strongly that we weren't doing something, he would have let us know because he's done so in the past. You know, I'm missing this from you. I'm missing that from you. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? And um, I'll take personally a little bit. So, um, just so you all know, that's the direction that I'm going because I feel like uh, my voice is shaking because I feel strongly about this, but one of those things we've been fighting this uphill battle and I was very proud of the work that we've been doing. We made great strides and I don't know where the cart went off the track. Like this kind of stuff, I feel bringing it back in almost five years and that's, um, frustrating and it's a little setting because people read this. They read these booklets online and you can almost feel the energy. Um, when our stuff comes up. And it doesn't say anything in here from this that almost two point two million dollars is taking down school budgets for West Street project. So that took away a few of our lockovers and that took away us being able to do anything else. That was voted on at town meeting and none of that is talked about in this booklet here when you're talking about state of the finances. How about the schools gave back $2 million? If you're going to talk about things that, I know he's talking about 700 and something dollars, 707 thousand dollars that was given that his eight town, he down the bill that the town voted on for a new school. That's not, that's not a new thing. That's not something that we just suddenly sprung on there. That's a bill, a debt that the town agreed to do almost seven years ago. At this point.
And to be very clear with people, I think we've been clear in our process around the statement of interest that the institutions of skilled, school building authority, that we are not pushing for a new school building. And I think even using things like that, for example, in the booklet probably draws people's ire because people are hyper sensitive and
Something deceptive.
Right. We have, we are not pursuing building a brand new school building, nor do we as, do I, the superintendent or you of the school committee have the authority to do so.
And we have, we have sat in front of the select board the past three years and asked for their blessing to do that because if it becomes apparent that this is the direction we need to do, our hands are tied if we haven't submitted that statement of interest.
So there'd be no reimbursement.
There'd be no reimbursement. So we have taken the steps, I, I'll say dutifully, by going to the town administrator, going in front of the select board, saying, do you want us to continue to submit the statement of interest? And I believe it's been a unanimous vote each And I believe it's been a unanimous vote each time for them to say yes. They unanimously approve it. So I don't want it to feel like we're doing anything deceptively, like we're lurking around behind people's backs trying to get a new school approved. But it's been sort of, we bring it up because we want to make sure that we don't lose our, uh, lose the ability to do something. If Granby wins, some kind of lottery or there's a food condiment or, I don't know, Harrison Board decided he likes, you know, Pete the Palace more than Ty Place or something and wants to give us money. I don't know. But we would, we would lose out on that opportunity if we hadn't done the statement of interest.
Good.
So we go through every year. Last year, they removed us from the list already saying, we know that your town's not ready to go, so we're not gonna kind of waste it. So I just, I'm frustrated. I am tired of the temper tot and thing. And I will be addressing it in my six-minute, um, thing, but I wanted to give, it was owed to give one and Chris a heads up because I, I feel attacked. Feel sort of like slanderous or libelous, or which one, libelous to be. Yeah. And I, I don't feel, it's an accurate representation of the work that we do and it feels like it's.
Again, I, we have best to be transparent. We have public here, the public store, it was open to people. The committee was at either, it's a certain pretty much. Um, and I reached out to Mrs. Flair and had us three a gauge and referring to meet. While they're looking to discuss their budget against chickens and.
So I just, it's, um, feel like it's a bad taste in people's mouths when that, the lack of a bit of, I'm fine with that rhetoric is out there and people respond to it. And I hear people talking about it and I go in and I sit at some of these meetings and different things and start hearing it from my friends. Guys, did they, why would you do that? Like, what are you talking about? Well, why didn't you get what they wanted? Like, well, we did. We you know, I feel pretty strongly that if Chris Martin or Glenn Sexton, who was the chair at that time, felt like they weren't getting something, they would have reached out to us because they've done so in the past. We had very civil, excellent meetings with them. Excellent meetings, very productive meetings. And this, I feel like it takes away from that and that I'm kind of not happy with it. So that's where I'm at. Anyone ready to pop me off the ledge, I'm certainly willing to hear.
No, I think that's the biggest piece, right? It's like all this, this round work that's been done and conversations that have been had and offerings to continue conversations if people are so willing. Um, and you don't necessarily get a response back just from one individual or one group. And then it makes all the other work feel like it didn't happen because it's the different spin on everything that people had tried to work so hard to be clear about and transparent with and everything else. And it is, it's frustrating, especially when you're trying to make those connections and build those relationships and share the information so that that same thing doesn't happen.
So all of that is to say, town meeting is on June tenth. I think it's at seven. It's, uh, it's at the gym in this building. Um, we are part of the Warren article. Um, the bu, the overall budget one, I think, you know, that will be fine, but I get my six minutes. I see my six minutes, our six minutes, um, up there and I will be addressing. Uh, once I, Stephen and I have been working on it, once I have it, I'll send it to you all. Um, just don't reply at all. But if you have any comments or things that you think we should stay away from or whatever, we'll, we'll.
I'll, I'll send it and I'll respond to it.
That'll be in here. Um, so tie right over. I apologize, but. It's just, it's, it's frustrating and angering and intimidating. We spend a lot of time here and we do a lot of good work and it feels like it just gets taken away by the stroke of a pen and it's not right. It's not. So anyway, I'll speak to Glenn tomorrow and then I'll try to reconnect with Chris and just, you know, I, I don't want to damage what we have. I know the school, um, the select board is new. Um, we have a different chair, we've got a new member. I don't want to take away from any of that work. But I'm also tired of being a trample on our committee's issue.
That's a, I think. So I think we've tried to make this in process overall has been product.
Yeah.
Been productive, but I think the discouraging part is you get so close to the finish line and there's this obscene obstacle, if you will, um, because we've tried to communicate, we've tried to be open, we've offered meetings and then for views like that, and there is a line or paragraph that page three that recognizes that other departments have, their, their spending has outstripped the growth rate of school spending. So it is acknowledged, but even that seems like the school, right?
It's a standard.
Yes, so, um, and I don't think I certainly, I don't think Jen, I don't think we're looking for a pat on the back for the budget work that we've done or anything. It's just we've done a lot of work on it and for this to come out at the finish line just seems, I don't know.
Thank you. That's, that's pretty much all. So we'll have budget and finance and policy subcommittees for next time. Um, we should keep it from superintendent in on there for next time. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that you all think we need to have. You know, I'm sure there'll be something to be briefed about town meeting. If there are any things don't go our way, though, we'll be a lot more budget conversation. Yes, that's.
And did you, Paul, wanna go over, so did you have a minute?
Oh, yeah, I did. Yeah, we can put it in for, for example, we didn't have it on here, but the dates. There, there's a new document in our, um, in our folder. I think those look like the ones that we had gone over. So I just want to, you know, we'll, we'll touch base on that next time because it'll be our last. So we'll just, um, get it, that's what we think. All right, there's, um, nothing else. We'll vote to enter into exact concession under Massachusetts General Hour, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Forty-One, eighty-three, to discuss strategy with regard to blood. Assuming so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Committee will not return to open session.
Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.